Okay, well, we have 5:30, so why don't we call this meeting to order? And Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Alec.
Here.
Ms. Karstafen?
Here.
Mr. Bax?
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
And Mrs. Segwin?
Here.
Okay, everybody here and accounted for. Madam Treasurer, would you please raise the flag so we can do the Pledge of Allegiance? There it is. Okay, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I see you got a new flag, huh?
Uh, yes. Yes, I did.
Okay, that's very exciting. All right, so welcome to the July 15, 2020, Board Meeting, virtual style. I'd like to introduce our group here. And we'll go back to the old-fashioned way, usually to my right is Board Member Jim Bax. To his right is Board Member Lane Segwin. I am Greg Alec. To my left is usually Vice President and Board Member Annie Karstafen. To her left is our Senior Board Member Mike Gebhardt. To his left is our Superintendent Anne Slush. And to her left is our Treasurer Joy Klickinger. Okay, so everybody is here, and we'll move along on the agenda. I do not believe that we have any board recognition or any presentations today. Also, Madam Treasurer, has anybody signed up a week in advance to talk to the Board?
No.
No. Okay, nobody has signed up to talk, so we'll move along. First item on the agenda, those are the Board Member Discussion Items. Any discussion items with the fellow, with my fellow Board Members?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, we toured both schools, and I'm real impressed. They are really nice-looking schools. Very happy.
That is good.
I agree.
Good.
On that note, on that note, will we also be touring Hamilton? Or is there a date scheduled for Hamilton for us?
Yeah, we are working on a date. Ms. Karstafen, I told Sean that Sean Murphy, the Project Manager, that we would like to do that very soon, so he's looking for dates for us.
Thank you.
Good.
I would, I would also like to, in that same, thinking about that same thing, give a well-done to Amy and, and her staff. And Mary Wright for the, for the goodbye tour videos. Those were, those were really nice. And having that, having that historical background, having all that work done that Mary did, I think was pretty interesting. But that's great that we did that, because, I mean, that media can be preserved a long time. And so it's always, it's always there. And it's, it's tough to, it's tough to watch these buildings like, like Ely get, get demolished. But, but it certainly, it certainly makes it clear that this is, you know, we're coming into a new era. So, but those videos were, were nice, and I'm glad, I'm glad we took the time to do that. That's great.
Yeah, I think that you guys did a great job on that also. And I think it's helped a lot of people that don't want to let go of the old facilities, kind of say goodbye and sort of maybe preserve that history. So absolutely, I've heard a lot of good things about that also, so. Okay, any other items, Board Members? Okay, with none, we'll move along on the agenda to the minutes. The minutes from the June 24, 2020, meeting have been posted. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion by Board Member Karstafen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gebhardt. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstafen? Aye. This, Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, moving along on the agenda to the Treasurer Action Items. Madam Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item I have this time is the monthly financial report for the month of June. And it was in the enclosures.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the action items, which is the monthly financial report?
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Board Member Bax. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Segwin. Questions or comments? I do have a quick question, Madam Treasurer. Could you just quickly explain a little bit on the, on your investment reports? It shows in the building fund still about $31,000 of bonds and $76,000 of interest earned. Could you just quickly elaborate on that, on how that's being utilized? And how much of those are for the construction process and everything?
All of the dollars in there for the construction process only. And we do have an investment firm that leads us in our investing according to the Board's policies. And the interest that is earned on that goes right back into the building project. So we're using that to help with the finances. And you know how tight everything's getting, where we are using the interest income for that. We're required to, actually. It's not, it's not something we decided on, we're required to do that.
Right. And is, so when the, when the project is due and the five new facilities are built, the 31,000 of bonds in the building fund, it'd pretty much be it, correct? Okay.
Yep.
All right, and we are required, are we still required to spend the interest first on those as soon as we get it? Or how's that go?
Um, the interest goes first when you're at the end of using state dollars. So the interest is never considered ours, it's considered the projects. So if there's ever an increase in the project, like we saw in some of those GMPs, then the first dollars that come off are the interest dollars. And then from that point forward, they split it by the 67.33%.
Okay, okay. All right, any other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, moving along on the agenda. Madam Treasurer, doesn't look like you have Treasurer Other, but you do have a OFCC report for us. Is that correct?
Yes, I am asking that, for the Board to approve the Design Services Agreement with AVG for the existing Westwood renovations.
Okay, and before we put this out for a vote, could you just kind of give a quick little review of what this is for, for record?
Yes, um, we are.
Somebody.
Yeah, I don't know, Anne, you might want to jump in here, even Brian. But part of the existing Westwood building is being renovated to be used as some of the special, like music, art wing of the new building. And then also the, some of the renovations will be used for moving the preschool over to the old Westwood building. And probably the administrative offices also, just because Westwood is going to be cheaper to repair than the older area higher, the EECB.
Yeah, I think the last time it was discussed at the Board level that there was going to be a connector wing done to the Westwood facility. Approximately a third would be used for an AMPS wing. Is that still, okay.
Right.
All right, with that said.
We are.
Sorry?
Yeah, yeah. It's about a 70-foot connector, Mr. Alec.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Bax, or excuse me, Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Karstafen. All right, so questions and comments? I'll start here. So this, this price is a projected price of 3.5 million with AVG getting 233,000. I guess my only major question on this, at one time I saw discussions that we were going to do, and Board Member Bax, if you want to comment on this or whomever, there was discussion at one time that we could do some of the work in the gym and on this AMPS wing. Are there costs, projected costs outside of the 3.5 million to do this extender and AMPS wing that are not included in here?
What we are looking at, Mr. Alec and, and Mr. Kokai, you can jump in with me, is we're looking at doing some of, with our own staff, some of the refinishing of, like, the gym floor, some of the painting and things of that nature, that may, may help out with some of these costs as, as we can throughout the time.
And that's listed in the, that's listed in the proposal.
Right, right. So the, the biggest cost, as we know, is, is the mechanicals, the roof and the electrical, heating, getting those all up to par. But there are some things that Brian has been working with AVG on and our, you know, Maintenance Department on, what can we do to lessen the costs of that contract?
I think primarily, and, and most of that is in the, is in the, is in the gymnasium in that wing. I mean, that's the bleachers, the, all the basket, the courts, the, all the floor refinishing, all that, all that we're doing. And I think in the locker room, in the locker room, we're doing the painting and doing the refinishing in there. So I think that from the FIZZED wing, I think is almost all district. There are, there may be some aspects of it that, but I don't, I don't recall any right now in that, in that gymnasium area.
So that, that would mean that we would only incur a cost for the product. Obviously, I, we wouldn't incur additional costs for our, our team, correct?
Correct. It would, it would lessen it.
Okay. And I, I, whenever you give something to an accountant that says a probable projected cost, it, it, it makes you nervous. So are we, have any feeling on this 3.5 million probable projected cost?
In the discussion with Sayed Abbas, who is the President of AVG, they have assured us they're going to do everything to cut those costs even lower. You know, as, as things come up, they'll, they'll inform us, we'll make good decisions together. The Board will be informed. But usually, you know, unless something comes up that they don't realize, but they've checked with PSI for asbestos and everything. So they've done their due diligence. So he feels there could be some areas we might be able to use materials, you know, even from the Admin Building to help out some of the doors and stuff. So we're going to cut costs wherever we can.
Now, I noticed this is a contract with AVG. So does that mean that, is AECOM the, the general on this automatically? Or does this have to go out for bid?
Um, AVG would be over the project, and they would, they would help us choose a contractor.
Right. It will not necessarily be AECOM.
Right.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments?
There is a, Greg, there is, there is 15% contingency in that, too.
Right.
So, I mean, so that's in there, and I think, I'm trying to think if there's any, no, I think that's, I think that's it. I think there's a contingency of 15%. And then, yeah, I think there, yeah, then AVG was broken out at seven and a half or something. But.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, okay.
Any other questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Moving along on the agenda to the Superintendent. Madam Superintendent, do you have action items for us this evening?
I do, thank you. First of all, to approve the contract with the Educational Service Center for Project Search. And this is only, we only inquire costs if we have students that enter this through this Special Education Department. Also, to declare the impracticality of providing transportation for the following pupil, we, we do a payment in lieu of. To approve the purchase order with CDWG for Chromebooks. As you can see, we are using the stimulus money and some Title I grant funds that will help us with our remote learning and upgrading our Chromebooks. To approve the payment of stipends as listed below, you will see that we're using a lot of our grant money to work with teachers to become prepared for whatever type of learning we decide in our plan. And that's all training to support that. And that concludes my action items.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Superintendent Action Items?
So moved.
Okay, I have, I think, motion from Board Member Karstafen. Do I have a second?
I'll second then.
Second from Board Member Segwin. Questions or comments? I did have one question. I noticed that we're using CARES money. How much CARES Act money did we get?
We got it roughly almost 2.2 million, but 396,000 of that went to our non-publics. So it ended up with about 1.8. I will tell you that there was just another $100 million that came through the CARES Act. I, I received a notice today that's looking like we're getting another chunk of money, but it's, it's got a lot of strings to it. It looks like it's for remote learning and cleaning equipment and sanitizing PPE. Looks like it's in the, the ballpark of about, and transportation, 300,000 to 400,000. But I'm not sure if some of that goes also to our non-publics. So I will continue to look at that and work with Joy on that.
Okay.
Okay. And could you, could you give me this, what is Project Search?
Sure, actually, I'm going to let Denise Blatt. It's, it's a special education program for our kids that graduate. Denise, are you on?
No.
No. Okay, well.
No, no, I'm on. I just had on mute. I'm sorry. That's okay. Oh, here, let me turn my video on, too. I don't know who controls all the master plans here, but Project Search is a program that's set from the county, from age, after graduation, where they can go in. They work at LCC, and they learn four different traits, work experience for students with special needs. So it's been around now for about the last seven years. And he has been a great grand for our students with significant special needs.
Okay. Great, thank you, Denise. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question regarding the impracticality for the travel. What causes that? Is that mileage or distance, basically?
It's a flat $250 fee that we pay and that's set. But a lot of times it's because it's one student and it goes a far distance, or parents choose to drive them instead of. So there's a lot of different reasons. But I believe Joy, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's a one-time fee of 250.
Yep, okay, just a one, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll on the Superintendent Action Items?
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, do you have personnel action items for us?
I do have a few. First of all, we have a resignation of a certified staff member. This is Jackie Kowalski. She got married, and her husband lives on Putten Bay, and she's moving to Putten Bay. So she's been a great employee. Next, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff. As you can see, we are doing the little bit of hiring we are doing for some of the spots of retirements. And then to approve the following supplemental contracts. I will tell you, there was an addendum to these contracts or something written that Joy and Heather and Jamie and I worked on with the attorneys to make sure that if, you know, where, if it's chunked, you know, based on if they actually have these extracurriculars. So that is all embedded within these contracts.
Okay.
Then to approve the stipend of payment for five days for the following Home Education Coordinator, Troy Hill. To approve the payment of up to 10 days per diem for our liaisons, homeschool liaisons. We have the following resignation of a classified staff member. We have an appointment of a classified staff member. And that concludes all of my personnel action items.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Superintendent's Personnel Action Items?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Bax. Questions and comments? I did have a quick question on, I noticed that Diane Price is still coaching Northway. Is she, she retired, didn't she? She's just staying on to coach that?
Yeah, she retired this year. She must be, I, I saw that name, too. She must be choosing to continue to coach, which is wonderful. That will get some of our retired teachers back to do that.
All right, any other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Madam Superintendent, do you have a Superintendent Report for us this evening?
Just a couple things. First of all, if any of you would like a brick from Ely, please let Mr. Kokai know. They were passing them out, and, and we wanted to make sure the Board of Education had a chance for a brick. Also, just wanted to mention, as we see, and I'm not sure what the Governor did announce tonight, but as we see many districts unroll their plans for the fall. As you know, and we've said in our newsletter, that we will be coming out in the next couple of weeks with our plan. We are working with the teachers, the classified staff, the administrative staff, and, and we will let the Board know as soon as we have, you know, that draft plan ready to go. But we're taking our time to do what we feel is look at every angle of, of what we can and can't do. I'm meeting tomorrow again with the Superintendents from Lorain County and Dave Cavell, the Health Commissioner. And he, we are finalizing the plan we put together as a county to have consistency a little bit. And then what we'll do and what most of the other districts are doing is taking the bits and pieces of that plan. We've been told by the state that the local Health Commissioner really guides us in this work. And, and we're kind of, you know, working together to make sure we do what's best for, for everyone. So just wanted to give a little update on that. Our hope is to get it out in the next week to two weeks. But we will let you, as a Board, know before we put it out publicly.
Good.
All right?
And the teachers are working on that with you, because, boy, am I hearing the rumors.
Yeah. We had a group of about 50 teachers there, I believe, on Tuesday. I zoomed in, I believe it was Tuesday. And we met with all the principals right before the teachers. I think the one thing we all have to remember, and, and I think you're seeing this on social media and across that, you know, there's a lot of fear out there, there's a lot of anxiety out there. And I think Mr. Bax and I had a few texts that went back and forth. This is uncharted territory, and it's going to be very difficult to meet the needs of everybody. But we're going to do our best to, to do what we think is right for our staffs and families. And I think that's why we're not rushing to put something out right away. We wanted to hear from the Governor and Dave Cavell one last time. But there are a lot of rumors, Mr. Gebhardt. And, and I think we have to make sure we, we ask questions and not just take for granted all those rumors are true.
Yeah, good.
Okay, good. All right, is that it then, Madam Superintendent?
That's it, that, that's all I have right at the minute.
Okay, super. Thank you for the, for the update. Moving along on the agenda to the Board of Education. We do have an item on the Board of Education about waiving a second reading. And Madam Treasurer, could you let us know why we're waiving a second reading?
Um, Anne, maybe you could address that better than me.
Yeah, I can address that. This was a Board policy that came out and was supposed to be approved by June 30 by the state. And there was, it was, it was sent out on the later side of things. And we, because of the COVID, and there were, you know, so we thought it might be a time that that could be waived if you do so feel inclined. If not, we can go to a first and then a second. We were just trying to get it done. There was very little changes to the plan.
And what is the, what is the urgency with why we need to waive the second reading?
Well, the, the state wanted it done by June 30. Yeah, it was due by June 30, but again, it got to us late. So, you know, I don't know. We just thought if, if you were willing, but if not, we can do the second reading.
Is there any, is it, can, can you articulate any major changes in the policy between this one and the old policy?
Um, Natalie, Natalie Matthews is on, and I know she went through it with a fine-tooth comb. Natalie, was there anything major? I don't know if she's.
Sorry, I was.
There she is.
No, there was not.
Okay.
I think it was a couple of words were changed, but no, other than that, when I read through it, there was nothing.
Nothing.
So the essence, the essence is the same.
Yes.
Correct.
All right. Well, with that said then, I will ask the Board to waive the second reading and adopt the Board policy this evening. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Board Member Bax. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gebhardt. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. Any other items, Board Members, for the, for the good of the cause? Any updates, Jim, on the construction?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay. All right. With no other items, and I believe we do not have an executive session tonight. Is that correct, Madam Superintendent? Okay.
That is correct.
I, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion by Board Member Karstafen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Board Member Segwin. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries, and we are all done. Everybody have a good night and enjoy their tax day.
Okay. Okay.